I'm going to go ahead and call to order this Kerrville City Council's special called meeting for August 19th, 2026. This class for invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Delane Seckerman, Councilmember Place One.
So would you pray with me? Dear Father, we thank you for this rain, although sometimes it's a reminder of what we've just been through. It's still much needed, much appreciated. Be with those who have lost loved ones, or lost their home, or part of their business, or all of their business. We know there are still folks out there that are hurting because of this, and we ask that you be with them and deliver what it is they need. And for so much that we have lost, we just hope that you will get us back to some sense of normalcy. Tonight, help us to make wise decisions, particularly since this pertains to our budget and the money that we will have to do what we need to do with. Help us to be discerning and intelligent about our decisions, and ask questions, and be ready to talk. Be with the first responders and our other city staff members and those that get out every day and put their lives on the line sometimes, and sometimes it's just a hard day at work, but they're doing their jobs and we much appreciate it. With them all, and in your son's name, we do pray for these things. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Do we have any visitors signed up to speak?
We do, but not on.
Not on the first one. Got you. All right. The next item is item 2A, presentation of the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget. We're going to start with you, Ms. Barron.
Good afternoon. I know you all have been waiting impatiently for this. Okay. I tried something new. It didn't work. Okay, so I've kind of tried to summarize things as much as I could, just for the sake of, I know this is usually very long presentations, so we want to make sure we have plenty of time for discussion. And also, I think it's important to realize if there's things that you see that you would like changed or modified, we can do that up until the time we do our publication notice. So if you have modifications, then we can talk about those in detail. Okay, here we go. So we're going to start by having the city manager make some remarks. We'll go briefly through our process and timeline, introduce you to ClearGov, which is our new digital budget software, and then skip down to some summary information by each fund and talk about some changes that we made in this year, proposing to make, and then have Dalton wrap up with anything he needs to say, and then open the floor to questions and comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We talked during the workshop pretty extensively on this upcoming budget. We definitely appreciate y'all's and the community's patience on getting this budget presented to y'all last week, and then again, you know, this evening. We definitely kind of want to open up the floor at some point and talk through, is there anything that y'all wanted to add? You know, having kind of processed this for the last week, is there any kind of changes that we want to make? And I'm sure we'll address these throughout the meeting, but you know, we're kind of using this as an opportunity for that third meeting, should anything, you know, kind of change, or if there's anything that y'all want to bring up, we want to be able to address that, you know, in this, you know, in this budget, you know, at this time. So we know there's going to be some questions. Really what I wanted to kind of dive into, again, a refresher for y'all, but also for the community, you know, as we're kind of going through this, I think I've said it since I've been here, the good, the bad, and the ugly. And in this budget, there's no different, you know, there's some things that we want to look at, and as we went through this process, and we've started this process very early on, as the disaster kind of came in, our team pivoted a little bit because we identified that there's obviously some things that needed to change. I would actually probably say maybe a little bit less of a fiscal impact where this one, we were able to kind of make some adjustments based off of the disaster, still, you know, still aligning with everything that we did. So focusing on the good, because I think that's still important. Our teams really spent a lot of time going into their budget, and we really came out with a 2% increase over the general fund. Now, we did move a couple enterprise funds out, so there may be, you know, it may show a decrease on there, but that's only because we moved Kerrville Shrinor Park and the golf course out of the general fund. But if we applied those in like we had it last year, it's about a 2% increase over. We did maintain the 3.5% voter approval rate. However, we did provide y'all information on the 8% and the challenges, you know, with that, since that was, you know, kind of task. So we do have some of that information, you know, here presented on what the fiscal impact would be to the revenues, also what that impact would be to the homeowner based off of the matrix and their home cost. Our fund balance remains strong. We typically try to keep about a 25% in their minimum, and we're sitting at 29%, you know, roughly. It does have the ability to absorb some of those unknown costs, you know, should council decide to not go with the 8%. It can absorb some of those costs into the rainy day fund. We did preserve some sustainability funding. We actually increased it from, you know, year over year. However, as I've talked about it in the bad and in some of the ugly, is it does not cover enough to cover the annualized fixed asset replacement costs, the general facilities fund cost, or the capital improvement cost. We're not the only ones in this boat. Every city, when kind of dealing with these, one, the new tax laws that the state's imposing on us, along with all the other factors, you know, that's happening, it is causing a lot of challenges that cities are having to face as far as amenities that a lot of our citizens and citizens of other communities are, you know, expect. Operational efficiencies, we did, and I'm going to kind of point out, a speaker, I think last week or the week before, had kind of spoken about reductions versus deferments. So I'm going to kind of highlight some of those. We did make some reductions in the cost of it, so that is actually savings in there. We were able to kind of trim out some positions that were either, you know, not really needed anymore, or we were able to merge those into existing positions, and we're continuously looking at and assessing, you know, where some of those, where we can make some of those improvements, but there were some reductions in that. This year, we did have quite a few, just like every year. We want to ask for the wish list as far as full-time equivalents. We did have a minimal growth in FTEs this year. We ran an FTE count, and it was roughly about 1.3-ish percent, you know, kind of year-over-year growth as far as FTE. So there was never really one year over the past 10 years that significantly jumped up, so we've been able to kind of maintain that. And of course, we're able to continue to maintain the services for quality of life and, you know, for a lot of ongoing projects, but no new CIP projects outside of the water fund were added this year. So the bad, even at 3.5% increase, we have, we're projecting roughly based off of Kirk Cat, about $65 million of lost value with a $71 million in new value. While that $65 billion could go up or down, that's just a number we objectively use based off of Kirk Cat. Even though we are using the no new revenue rate, the no new revenue rate, revenue generation is basically going to be a wash, you know, plus or minus some because of the $71 million of new value. Again, we talked about the declining sustainability funding, and while we've been talking about this for years, we wanted to really trim things out of the budget. We really wanted to get the budget into a good place to really truly understand what this was doing. We did an exercise on both existing fixed asset replacement as well as what it would take for us to cover our annualized sustainability costs, and unfortunately, with what we got, we cannot do that. So we are going to look at, you know, creative ways that we can start covering those, you know, sustainability measures. Again, with the 2% increase, we really have a few remaining places left to trim. There's really not many areas that we have left that we can kind of pull out of. If we start diving into personnel, if we start diving into some of the retention stuff, if we start diving into other things, that could have other second and third order impacts. So while we're talking about all this, just know that our teams are diligently looking at creative solutions to kind of overcome, which we will talk about some of these. We did defer some of the general fund transfers. So yes, we are using interest income, which is not something that we typically would like to do. We have the ability, and that's not something we're going to continuously rely on. We did not want to use interest income for any recurring costs, so we're using interest income to fund either those one-off things or be able to, you know, supplement the, some of the transfers going into CIP and general facilities fund. Sales tax revenue, if y'all recall, last year, we had a 3% decrease in projected sales tax. We're pretty close to on budget with that or with our projections. This year, I think we're factoring in a half a percent increase, but relatively, it's going to remain flat, give or take, as we kind of navigate this. Hot revenue is down about $150,000. We've pretty much recommended council to cut about 10% of hot across the board to include CDB, and we're going to continue to assess that, but it's about 12% down from FY '25. So the ugly, and really, when we talk about the ugly, these are things that we just have to take into consideration, along with the good and the bad and the ugly. We have to not only ask the hard questions, we have to accept the often difficult answer, and then we have to take an appropriate action to move forward with that. Without any long-term revenue diversification, future budgets will likely result in service cuts. Again, we're going to work on solutions, we're going to work on all of this, but these are things that we are going to have to definitely address. Potential need for hiring and budget freezes until new growth value catches up with some of the state tax limits. We are already in some of the hiring freezes in certain areas where we can. We're not pushing anybody out, but if things are not, we're not backfilling necessarily some positions as we navigate each department's operations. The state legislative pressure on property tax, 3.5% lower, and expenditure caps are not sustainable for cities. You know, I know there's a big push to eliminate property taxes. We could talk for hours about that, but for municipalities itself, it is not sustainable. And when we're at a 1.2% to 1.5% growth, we're kind of fleshing out because from SB2 in 2019, we had about three years of this overinflation period of appraisals that we saw, skyrocketing appraisals. It kind of gave a false positive that cities can survive. So the cities that are thriving are the ones that are growing at 6% to 12% or 6% or higher. Those cities that are ultimately built out or growing at a more managed rate like the city of Kerrville, we are starting to see that impact to operations. Disaster recovery will continue to strain operations, you know, and capital funding into future years. Managed growth will help with that, so we do have growth that is already in the city limits, that we do provide services or will provide services for. Some of those will help offset, you know, the growth. We just don't know what that curve is going to look like until, you know, future dates. So considerations, not necessarily in any particular order, more to follow on some of these as we work through it, but looking at a crime control or fire control prevention district, these would levy some, a portion of sales tax, you know, it'd have to go to the voters in order to do that, but we do want to get some more information to y'all. That potentially could set aside about $1.1 million per district using sales tax dollars dedicated to fire and dedicated to police operations or fixed assets, infrastructure, CIP, et cetera. Drainage fees, we do have a study in progress to kind of look at drainage fees or some other fees that may be required. If unfortunately, you know, the direction is going on property taxes, we have to start looking at some amenities that our residents, you know, come to expect, and we may have to look at other revenue options, you know, for that. Don't know what that looks like, but we have to make sure that we, you know, fall in line statutorily, and again, we have to make sure we do our due diligence. We're continuously evaluating enterprise funds, so our business generating funds. We're making sure that we tweak those business models, making sure that they do operate in the black or break even at a minimum, but ideally, we want to have, you know, we treat it like a business, and so we want to be able to put that money back inside, and we don't want to have to subsidize that from the general fund or others. So we are constantly reevaluating and evaluating our business models to make sure that they are sustainable. Managed growth, so identifying more opportunity to bringing in additional sales tax and hot tax. I think as we look at rooftops, don't necessarily generate revenue, as some kind of say, you're giving a service for that, and the state's trying to limit those services that we could provide for that property tax, and so that's where this balance comes in. As we try to look at other, you know, light industrial or commercial or certain areas, you know, within our land use plan, we can start kind of figuring out what opportunities there are to increase the sales tax, which again, kind of reduces or levels out, you know, future property tax. You know, there's a current bill right now, it's not going to impact us unless it passes special session number two, which is currently going on at the state. Senate Bill 10, I believe, which would, for cities and counties under 75, or over 75,000, would go down to a 2.5% property tax. So it's not if, it's when they're going to continue to chip away at that 3.5%. If the disaster rate is considered, we would recommend, and again, this is not statute, this is our recommendation, or one of them, would be restricted to a disaster contingency or mitigation fund. That way, the residents know this is not being used for recurring costs, this is not being used to do day-to-day operations, this would be used strictly to manage either the current or future disasters. Julie will talk a little bit about that, but it would generate about 471,000 in additional revenue if that 8% was adopted. And again, you can always hold election for increased property taxes for future dates. However, that is not a long-term solution. Even if you do get one, the diminishing return on a 3.5%, you know, over three, five, or 10 years, because the way the no new revenue rate comes into play and the voter approval rate comes into play, even though property tax revenue is generated more because of new value, your rate continues to drop. So there is a diminishing return over time that you end up in the same place that you were left at when you did raise it. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor, and Julie can continue on with the presentation. She'll talk a little bit about ClearGov, and ClearGov is something, you know, while it's new, it helps us really put into the budget book, which helps us present our proposed budget. But without that, Mayor, I'll take any questions.
All right. Council, any questions for City Manager Rice?
Okay. So before we get too deep in budget, I would like to show you kind of the fruits of what we brought to you, I guess, several months ago, when we talked about having an online budget tool or a live budget tool. So this is kind of new to us, and so if I have to defer, as I'm going through here to Jacob, I will, because he built this, I'm going to give he and our accounting assistant, Clarissa, very high praise for this document, because I've not had a whole lot to do with the building of this, but the backside software was pretty hard to set up, and he did it. So I just thought I would show it to you. This is the QR code that takes you directly to the link. This is on the website as well, but I wanted to provide the link so that if anyone wanted to see it. And basically, I think Martin's driving, and so am I. So if you look at this, it'll open. Martin, are you, there he goes, Martin's going to open it for me. So it will look like this on the website, but what's really nice about this is two things. First of all, if we have last-minute changes and we make those, in the past, we've had to go and physically create every graph again, because they were all built out in Excel. So if one number changed, everything changed. And so when we have two days, literally is what we had this year, to come up with some proposed tax rates, from the time we received the certified roll on a Thursday to the property tax rate calculation on Saturday afternoon, we had about two days to come up with something and work that in and rework the budget so that we could file it. So what you basically are looking at, if I just simply show you general fund, so it'll give you the narrative like you're used to seeing it, looks like our regular budget book. I'm not driving very well. So if your summary's here, if you go down and look for your graphs and detailed information, and you want to look at more things specifically, it'll have all the detail, actually more detail than you've seen in the past, as far as what we present to you in the budget book. And then you're able to eliminate or add categories if you want to dig down a little bit deeper, and then it'll have links to take you to different places. So it's handy from a user standpoint, if you want to eliminate things, like I don't want to see taxes, I want to see everything else, and then you can look at those on a summary level and then drill down from there. So it's really handy, and you can go through each section, and as I said, with every change we make, this changes, and so you're seeing live documentation at all times. Now, once the budget is adopted, of course, there won't be any changes, and it will be as it was adopted, but it really has been good to be able to make those changes quickly and shift gears when we needed to, especially over the past few weeks as we've been dealing with the implications of the flood. Hey, Martin, I'm good. Yes, please.
This is not on the website yet.
It is, it's live today.
So have you had any activity? I know that's very early.
I haven't looked, to be honest. We got it live this morning. It was on there as a PDF before when we presented the proposed budget. We went through and made some updates, just based on technical things we needed to make on the backside, and got it on the website, so it's live today. So it's out there for anyone who wants to use it, and it's a good resource, and there's more detail in there than you will have seen in the past. So we're happy about it. It's going to take us a little while to transition to using a new tool, but so far, it's been nice because we made some changes to charts and graphs, and they automatically change for us, so that's been really nice. So I wanted to introduce you to that briefly. Okay, so let's hop into citywide, and we always look at that first. So just from a summary level, we start our budget process, of course, back in October. We pretty much start as soon as we start the year, so we'll start working on the following year's budget. We were really working at a strong pace, and of course, we had some challenges, most of which Dalton addressed with you, that weren't flood-related. So we know what those challenges are, and we've talked about forecasts in depth, but we really tried to remain committed to sustainability. Obviously, we have increase in personnel costs, as does every other business, group health, training salaries, those kind of things that just, you know, they compound over time. So we are in the people business, so it takes our people to provide the services that we provide to the community, and so that is the largest cost within the general fund budget. Departments, for the most part, maintained baseline budgets, and some of them came in less than they were last year. And so we had a lot of internal meetings and really talked at looking at what are the services that we need to be providing, at the quality we need to provide them, and where can we look at reducing expenditures where we can to make the most sense of the budget. So I will say, there's not a lot of room in operations. I've looked at it in detail, down to every gallon of bleach that we buy, and there's not a lot of, there's just not a lot of fluff there. We don't build that into operational budgets. We did have to make some rapid shifts at the last minute, of course, in the last few weeks, so again, we thank you for your patience, as we adjusted some things and moved our workshop to a little bit later with everything going on. But we really tried to take into consideration what we know about the disaster, which was not much. So if this had been in, you know, March or April, we would have been able to identify exactly what lost value was. On this notice, we cannot, so we're using some estimations provided by Kirk Cat, and then we'll follow those through, as we've talked about, into November. We were able to keep some sustainability components, and Dalton talked a little bit about those, protected our merit and step increases for staff, and then protected fund balance for potential use, so we're not taking any, there's no movement of fund balance to other expenses at this time. We'll talk about flood repairs in the next few weeks, we'll be bringing you a lot of updates on that as we move forward. We did change some structure, and we talked about this a little bit, so taking KSP and golf, which are really fee-based parks, and so when people pay for those services, what we're asking those two divisions to do is to, over a period of time, stand on their own. And so golf has been its own fund, and then it was moved administratively back to the general fund, but it really is a business, and so we're moving that out separately for transparency, but also, we've been really focused on long-term planning in those two. So when we talk through this, I'll show you how that kind of skews the number in the general fund, because it looks like a reduction, but when you bring that back in and really compare apples to apples, it's not. And so we'll talk about that, because I don't want it to appear that we've made all these cuts out of the general fund that are not essentially general fund cuts. And then, of course, transition to the new public safety facility, and there's a lot of things that we're just estimating right now until we know more, but we've estimated, we feel like, on some square footage, comparable to some other areas and things like that, so we're hoping that we've captured everything that's required for that. And we did put that in its own department, so that in the future, if anyone says, what is that public safety facility cost us to operate, we can tell you what the utilities are, what are the expenses, what are the maintenance and those kind of things. So key initiatives for '26, repair, replace, obviously, rebuild any damage to property caused by the flood. So that's, I would say, the second highest thing that we've been doing in our department in the last month, is really assessing what do we have and what can we expect from reimbursement, and what are our funding sources out there. We dedicated, we have dedicated resources so that we can really be successful in our FEMA grant. It is a very long process, a very detailed process, and department directors are working with us very well to make sure that we get what we need to be able to do that. Employee retention, that's always a top priority for us. As you know, the, you know, the more we can retain the people that we have, the better services that we can provide. So we're really trying to work on turnover and those kind of things, and then completion of current capital projects. So not a lot of new initiatives, just basically because of what we've been faced with, but definitely want to just finish some of the things we have started. So looking at citywide, $102 million in revenues, $117 million in expenses, and so just so we know, clearly that is not a balanced citywide budget. The general fund and the water fund are both structurally balanced by policy. The reason for the difference there is capital projects are multi-year projects, so we'll receive funding in one year, and expenditure doesn't come till the next. So our revenues are actually recorded when we receive them and our expenses when we incur them. So it's very normal to see that on a consolidated level. We wanted to show you this just kind of as part of our working process, I guess, so when departments first start submitting things to us in February, they'll submit their operational requests, just for their regular operating budget, and then anything new that has not been in the budget before. And this wouldn't be things that they're changing or, you know, changing a software from one to the other, things like that. These are brand-new requests that haven't been in the budget before for consideration. So what you're seeing here is, on the top, the new position requests that were put in, and then also, at the bottom, the new item requests that were put in. And so I put it like this, because it's a little bit simpler to see. Basically, we had about almost $1.2 million in total new requests, and we're funding $200,000 and some change. So the biggest thing, and we'll talk about it later, the only position that we added was an animal control slash code enforcement officer, which you know, and we've talked about at some depth, and Dalton can certainly speak more to that if there's detailed questions. And then a few things, one thing for the golf course, some contract management software that is desperately needed, and will definitely have a lot of value to our daily processes, and then an excavator for the water fund. So the other things we're not really trying to track on is what things are requested year over year that are not able to be included in the budget, and how do we start addressing, you know, how we fit the things in that are necessities that we're not adding to fleets or adding to equipment or positions. Okay, so everybody's probably biggest interest here is general fund. So it is structurally balanced, right at $39 million. This is about what it was last year. If you bring KSP and golf back in for comparison, we're about 2% higher, so 2% is still really small increase, so you can tell departments have done a lot of work. Obviously, we did push some things and reduce some things that we've talked about in workshop, but we'll talk about those a little bit more. So we reduced general fund asset replacement. We were scheduled, based on what we kind of talked through last year and the prior year, to hopefully be at $800,000 this year. We're not able to do that with the shifts that we need to make with the unexpected events and what we're not really able to estimate right now as far as lost value. So we kept that at $500,000. We have some interest money that's rolling over there as well, so we're not really taking the biggest hit that we could have on there. And again, we'll watch that, and as exemptions come in, and we see what the actual role is after those exemptions are applied, then we can come back and discuss those things once we're more comfortable. We just didn't want to over-budget something or underestimate property tax. Reduced street maintenance, so this is a biggie, and we know that, but what we looked at was a 10-year history of what was budgeted and what was actually spent, and so, you know, from employee capacity standpoint, and then also sometimes finding contractors to get to things timely, we are doing a carryover of the surplus every year to CIP. And so we were comfortable at that level for now, because that's about what we were rolling over each year. This past year, it was $375,000. Years past, it's been 400, 600. So we're kind of reassessing that and working with David and his team to see where we need to be and what we need to do going forward. We reduced some community events, really immaterial there, and then instead of transferring money from the general fund to CIP or to that additional asset replacement, we're proposing to take that out of interest, which I will say has been very healthy for us. We don't want to count on that, and it's not something that we look at as long-term sustainability, but we feel like we made some good decisions when we had bond funds and those things that have kind of given us a little bit of boost on the sustainability side, so we want to set some of that aside for future needs for replacement and repair of our facilities. Okay, so where does our money come from? Everybody wants to know that. So again, $39 million in revenue, $13.5 million comes from property tax, and that does include our current budget plus prior year, so we always estimate what prior year collections are, and we're pretty close on that. It's pretty conservative, actually, but that includes all of those things. Sales tax, $2.3 million, that's about half a percent higher than this year's budget. We originally had it in flat, but we've been trending 2% to 3% better, and we're estimating that we will have some additional sales tax revenue just from damages from people trying to do some rebuilding and repairs and things like that. So we're comfortable with that, I still think it's pretty conservative, given where we are and the nature of what we're fixing to experience. Transfers in, of course, some of that is from water admin fee that the water fund pays to the general fund for services like legal and finance and HR and those components, and those are built out on a percentage of departmental budget. Trina has a huge spreadsheet that we do that calculation every year. Street use fee, and then also a little bit coming in from occupancy tax for some administrative things that we do within the finance department for collections, audits, and those kind of things. Franchise fees, that's going to include K-Pub, Charter Communications, some other telephone companies, Atmos, those things, and then intergovernmental is simply the agreement that we have with Kerr County for EMS, and then also with KSD for resource officers.
What is the number for
What is the number for services? You've got 17%, what is that number?
Oh, I left that out. That's going to be EMS primarily and solid waste. So that's going to be the landfill surcharges, not your solid waste curb collection. We don't, that's a pass-through, but that's what that's going to be, so EMS. Sorry, I left that bullet off.
Okay, I'm just curious as to the amount of revenue generated by that.
It's, I can tell you.
Because if you add all this up, it only comes up to about $31 million instead of $39.
So you're about $8 million, so your services are $6.7 million.
Okay.
And so then there's some grant interest miscellaneous, yeah, some other little stuff.
Okay.
That's the slide here, so this is the detail on what you were just asking me.
Okay.
So you can see the service revenue here. The big thing here, and the reason it's in a red box, is remember we moved golf and KSP out. And so you have a big reduction in recreation revenue, which is now in their own funds, so that's what that is. So, and again, that negative change is because of that. So if we were to add them back in, we'd be about 2% different. Does that help you, Brenda? Sorry about that.
Yeah.
I left that bullet out.
Thanks.
So I won't go through all of this. I present this every year as far as definitions for property tax, and it's a complicated thing. And so I think definitions are important if people want to know what we're referring to. We try not to use acronyms all the time, but we naturally do. The new thing added to the slide is the disaster voter approval rate, and that's related to the resolution that you guys approved directing Bob to calculate the 8%. And so I just wanted to include that in there. As you look at your budget book, you will see two tax rate calculation sheets, and one is for non-disaster and one is for disaster. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about how we kind of used a different methodology when we're calculating property tax this year, just with the unknowns. So Kirkad is estimating a $65 million revenue loss. I'm sorry, I should not say revenue, property value loss. In the general fund, we're thinking that equates to about $275,000 at the rate that we are proposing. So if the $65 million in loss value is correct from Kirkad. So on an ordinary year, we'll budget between 98.5% to 99% collection rate of the levy, depending on what history is showing trends. We have a strong property tax collection rate, really. I would say that overall, we have no issues with property tax collections. When really, less than $200,000 a year is from prior years. So we're usually very confident in that, and we've been right on target. But with the unknowns, we went ahead and reduced that collection rate to 97.5. There's some provisions this year that are going to allow people who have exemptions to pay quarterly if they need to, or half pays as they usually do, but the quarterlies will also be no penalty. So there's going to be some other provisions that Bob will be sending out with notices when we get to that point that lets people know that they have some other options. So we did that, and then we took out the estimated lost revenue from the estimated loss value that provided by Kirkad. So again, though, they have until October, I don't know the exact deadline. They have 105 days from the declaration of disaster to apply for those exemptions. And so once they do that and those get certified, then we'll be able to update the roll and bring you back really something a lot more solid. So the rate that we're proposing is 5579. That's down from 5595 of last year. This is not using any of the disaster rate. Interest and sinking, our debt fund is 1406. That is not a proposed, that is our debt rate, so that's, that one is not negotiable. We have to pay debt first, as we talk about regularly. Everything else is left over for MNO. And so I did point out that the voter approval disaster rate at the 8%, of which not all of that would have to be utilized if that was the direction that we went, it would be 5711. So not a, not a big difference there. I'll talk to you a little bit more about that. So this, again, this is a tool. This is not setting concrete. I can't create a chart that's going to be able to capture every nuance of every property. But I wanted to just provide some information about the difference between the 5579 and the 8%, just so that you could see what the impact would be to the property tax owners. So the 2025 taxable value there, you can see that that's last year's rate. I applied a 5% value increase, because you can't, I can't use $100,000 this year and $100,000 last year. That's not reasonable, because there are value increases. So we applied a 5%, which is about average for our residential properties, based on our certified role, to just kind of tell you what your change would be, based on what you paid last year to what you would pay this year at those values. And then the one on the right is the same exact thing, but calculated at the disaster rate. So right now, our average residential value is $376,000 and some change. So if you kind of look at that 350 range there, you can see about $92 increase on the rate that we're proposing, and at the 8%, if it were to go all the way to that rate, would be 140. So this is just a tool, again, estimated tool, but a very good tool for taxpayers to use. You can use this link, which is on our website. You can go in and put in your taxable value of your home, and it will generate a tax receipt for you that is unofficial, of course, because, you know, we don't know, there's a lot of nuances. But it'll basically tell you what your taxes are paying for. So we like this, because it'll tell you how much you're paying for public safety, how much you're paying for fire prevention. And by department, it breaks it out, and it will tell you what your, what that spread is based on your tax rate. This is just rates and revenue, historical. We always like to show this, because people want to know what increases have been over time and what revenue looks like. Naturally, as values go up, rates are going to go down. That's the way it works naturally, because there's more spread. So it's like anything else, when more people are paying in, you don't have to collect as much from each household or business owner. You can see the yellow line is our rate. So even though revenues go up, the rate is still, can go down. And the big shift there, of course, was the voter-approved public safety bonds there in FY 2023. So new taxable value does have a big impact. So again, as growth comes, the taxable value, of course, on this is, the impact is year one, because it's not calculated as part of the no new revenue rate. So your check, your no new revenue rate is calculated, your levy is calculated, and then the new value is calculated on the rate. So it doesn't, it's not part of that. Now, year two, then it becomes part of the no new revenue rate calculation. So it's interesting when you're tracking new value, because you can see we've about averaged. This past year, we had a really high new value. And so I went ahead and gave you some of the high contributors there, so that you would kind of know, like, what areas are we really growing, and is it commercial, is it residential? And it's heavily residential. And so, you know, that's, that's not, I'm not going to say the best, but it's, it's a little, it's going to be less impact than it would be if it were commercial, just because of the values over time. So anyway, I wanted to show you that, so you could see where the new value was coming from and who the top contributors are. So revenue generated from the proposed rate. So I did this by fund, so that you can see the money that's going to be going into each fund at the rate of 5579, and compared that to last year. So you can see an increase in the general fund of $683,000. And that's, 297,000 of that is from new value. So when you look at it like that, that's when you can really see the impact of new value. So the other, the difference there is going to be from current ratepayers. So overall, 401,000 of the 604, because there was, there were some decreases there, just based on how we calculated some things. So 66% of that increase is from new value. So had we requested the disaster rate of 8% all the way to the 5711, that would generate $431,000. So sales tax, and these are only the two that I'll talk about in detail, and that's because they are the largest contributors to the general fund. And sales tax, obviously more volatile than property tax, because there's a lot of unknowns. So very critical for us to forecast this accurately. Sometimes it can be difficult, but the main thing is that we identify outliers and remove those when we're doing estimations and projections, and then also budget for future years. So we really watch those every month, all the way down to about the $3,000 taxpayer, to see the changes that we're having month over month, year over year, and identify new taxpayers, those who have dropped off and those kind of things, to make some decisions on that. This is a different look of historical sales tax. So this is total revenue for the year, and so your month-over-month trend lines. We are budgeting half percent over fiscal year 2025, which I still feel is pretty conservative. So I'm hopeful that we will meet budget this year, which we weren't sure in the beginning of the year, but it's really started trending a little more consistently, so that's been nice. We did reduce last year's, FY 25's budget by 3% compared to '24, just because we were seeing some leveling and things were trending down. Coming out of COVID and inflation, where we had double-digit increases all the time, that's not something we can expect to sustain. So still very healthy, and you can see even with the change, our revenue is still higher than it was, you know, back in even 2019 before COVID. So unknowns, which taxpayers might have been impacted by the flood. We don't completely know that answer yet. Maybe people are going to change their habits, one way or the other, you know, spending habits, just based on the flood. Impact of donated goods on sales tax. And while we've loved and really enjoyed, you know, all of the donated goods, you know, I think about things like all of Curval ISD's school supplies were donated, but not from our local vendors. And so what was the impact that they had on our local folks that were planning on those sales? So we just don't know that yet, and we won't know until September what that looks like. And then impact of sales tax on rebuilding, so potentially increase in building materials and things like that. This is really the tool that we use the most, and this is a 12-month rolling average, because we've talked about, as we do financial reports each month, that month-over-month is really not the best indicator, because we could have some outliers. Someone pays late, or someone pays early. So it's really not good practice to just use month-over-month comparisons or even year-over-year. But this kind of tells you what's happening over a 12-month period. And so we identified February here for dollars, because that's our heaviest sales tax month, because Christmas purchases are in there. So purchases for December, sales taxes received in February. So that's why we use this month. And so you can, you know, kind of track what's happening in February, that even when we have a downward trend, revenues are still up. And so we kind of take several factors here to decide what do we think's going to happen. And you can see the red line on the right over the past six months, basically that it, things are trending back up to somewhat of what we're going to call normal, so prior to COVID, but also after inflation, where we saw a big, heavy movement. So other major revenues in the general fund, and we talked about this a little bit when we looked at the detail earlier, we took out property tax and sales tax, just so you could have a better look at all of the other pieces of the pie. So we have EMS services, and so we did break out services here between EMS and solid waste. So when we say services and we present those to you monthly, it's those two things added together. So we broke them out here, just so you could really see the difference and what kind of drives our other major revenues. Intergovernmental, you can see that there in the light blue, and then franchise fees in the orange. And so you can see where increases are and where the, the kind of consistency is year over year. So with all of that, anybody have any questions on revenues before I hop into expenses?
No?
Okay. So where does our money go? So same kind of look here at expenditures by category. And I wanted to show this again, because if you look at just the budget book, you're going to see that reduction. And again, we bring KSP and golf back into it, we're about a 2% increase overall. So we'll talk more about KSP and golf in future slides, but wanted to show you that look. This is proposed expenditures by department, and, you know, we focus a lot on giving it to you by category, but what are departments costing the city? And so I think this is important as you look at the split. Obviously, big tickets there are police and fire, which are not a surprise. That's one of our high priorities. When you look at the parks and recreation triangle there, it's important to remember that that also includes building and facility maintenance, janitorial, and all those kind of things. So because they report to that department, it falls into that, that category, but just wanted to point that out. And then you can see the other departments as they keep their each, their percentage of the budget.
What do you have encapsulated in other?
So other is going to be contingency, it's going to be dues and subscriptions, some employee things when we have events and those kind of things, but primarily contingency. And so what you'll see with contingency, and you'll notice this when we do financial reporting, is contingency will start the year at $250,000. But we don't, as a rule, charge things to contingency, because we don't want to put it where it belongs. So if we need to move money for a big maintenance or a big repair, something like that, we will actually reduce by line item transfer that budget and move it to the other budget. So you'll see that happen between the current budget, you know, the adopted budget and the current budget. So we'll move that between line items, so that we're accurately charging. So that's the only way to build history, because if we put everything to contingency that we used contingency for, then we would never really know what we used it for. So that's the big one there, and the other things are really small. So just a different look at general fund expenses. So again, $39 million here. What you're seeing is public safety in the dark blue, and general government in the light blue. And this is departmental budgets. So 54% of the general fund dedicated to public safety, consistent percentage-wise compared to prior years, and it just shows you the growth over years is what our expenditures are. Most increases are related to personnel, which we'll talk about a little bit, and inflationary factors. So beginning in 2022, inflation really started to impact us. Gas went through the roof, cost of materials and supplies and services went through the roof, because other vendors were paying their personnel more. And so costs just naturally grew. And that's, that's the biggest reason why you can see those increases, starting in fiscal year '22, which I think speaks to what Dalton was talking about, about long-term sustainability and compounding costs. So this is just looking at the personnel in the general fund. So $39 million, 28 million of that is personnel. And that does include not just salaries and wages, but that's going to be group insurance, training, retirement. All of those things are wrapped up into a personnel category. Of that 28 million, 18.9 is public safety, and you can see that same look here, where the dark blue is public safety and the light blue is general government. This does not include things that are support departments. We charge those in ice cream, right, Chief?
You do, say that again?
We get paid in ice cream for our services.
Oh.
Chief McCall, super nice about that. But we're proposing a 3% average merit increase and a 3% step increase for public safety, and this is in line with the step plans that you have seen before. So just wanted to show you what our largest expenditure was there. This, again, is just expenditure by category, and this is giving you basically a five-year look. So you can see where our heaviest expenditures are and where our increases are and where our consistency is. And so, again, a little bit of decline in supplies and maintenance, but that's heavily related to KSP and golf. But again, in 2022, you'll see the little uptick pretty much in every department or every category there, and then leveling off after that. And we haven't seen prices reduce, but we have seen leveling of price increases, if that makes sense. So we're not seeing 30% increases on supplies and maintenance like we were. They've leveled out a little bit. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Trina, talk about water fund. But do you have any questions on general fund expenditures before I do that?
You want? You?
Okay. All right, water fund. So water fund is balanced also at $17.6 million for fiscal year '26 that we are proposing. It is a $763,000 increase, which is 4.5% over fiscal year '25. And 456 of that, 763, is attributed to the increase in the reused water cells that we had proposed. And then the remaining is also small increases to water and sewer rates. Key, key factors here in the water fund, besides those two, the average user should see approximately about $5 per month increase on their water bill due to those small increases in the water sewer rates, the irrigation and reuse rates. We looked at those, and we did do a haircut to the irrigation consumption. We took that into consideration when we set the rates, as well as the reuse system also. We definitely, everything has been super conservative on the operational, as Julie said. Everything is super tight, and some of the sustainability pieces actually were reserved here in the water fund. We didn't get hit as hard on what we had to cut out here on the water side, but we'll talk about those here in a little bit. Asset replacement is receiving a transfer of $650,000, CIP $500,000, and then we were able to add in some to our facility replacement plan for $125,000. Debt services, $4.7 million for the year. And then the transfer this year to, from the water fund to the general fund for the services it provides, $2 million. We do have the street use fee that we charge the water fund for disruption of the streets and all the breaks and stuff they have to work on. And then we do supplement development services for some of their offsetting of their expenses. This here, this pie chart here is just the breakdown of the, oh, that went super fast. Way ahead, sorry about that. Okay, so this breakdown on this pie chart is the 17.6 million and what categories produce what. Obviously, 97% of our revenues are consumption-based, and that is the water, sewer, and the reuse customers, as well as wasted. as well as waste disposal and I believe that's it. But we have a lot of other little fees that contribute to operations as well. So the two largest revenues, water and sewer, last year, they were split up. They, water contributed 46% of revenues and sewer did also. This year, we're proposing that water increases a little bit more and contributes 46%. Got to go slow on that, sorry. Okay, so the reclaim water customers, we did a workshop with you just to show you what we were proposing on the rate structure. So the reuse customers were set at a flat rate per thousand gallons that they utilize. And we've been kind of restricted on what we could do in this area is because we had a lot of customers that were on contracts. Well, I'm not going to say a lot, we only have about 10 customers. But majority of them were restricted to their contractual rates. So we are proposing to increase the base rate charge. We did a lot of benchmarking with other cities to see what the average and medium charges were for the base rates. And it's really all over the map and we have to focus and do what Curville needs to cover. So we did analysis, looked at the debt service that the reuse system needs to pay that debt and the infrastructure cost to replacing and taking care of, of those needs. So we are looking at a, a monthly base charge increasing from $20.65 per month up to $171. And then we're going to change the structure from a flat rate to a tiered scale. And those are, the, the volume is a lot larger. So we're going to start at a million gallons for our first tier and work its way up there. So our handful of customers that are on the reuse system will see a dramatic change this year unfortunately. But we, we are willing to work with those customers and provide notices in advance to let them understand and help them understand why we're doing this and what implications it would be to them. This here is a representation of what an average residential customer's charges would be for fiscal year 26 proposed rates. So this green chart on top. No, this is where I'm at. The 92% of our customers fall into the first three tiers of water consumption every month, average. So we are not affecting that, those first three tiers on the rates. We will start at the higher volume users, 15,000 gallons plus. Typically, we see about 2,000, 2,500 gallons of water used per, per person in the household. So anything beyond that typically is outside irrigation, it's possible leak. But you can get with us at any time if you do have leak issues or whatnot. So the rates will affect 15,000 gallons and up. Down to the sewer rates, we are going across the board with the 44 cents per thousand gallons. And that is, these two charts are for the residential customers. We brought this, this population in just because that is the biggest base that it's going to affect.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Go back to the last slide. We don't have the number of accounts. I was just curious if you knew that this rate that's going up from 20 to 171 would affect?
We have 10 accounts. 10 accounts, yes.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am. Okay, and this chart here is going just to show you what an average customer's change in monthly billing would be. And this is only water and sewer. The city does bill for garbage, but it's a pass through as Julie explained. So the average household this year on our sewer averaging months was 5,200 gallons per household. So their bill would go from $87 approximately per month to $93 per month. It'd be a difference of 591. And you can see the annual charge of what it would, would add up to be. We do always keep in mind our average customer and, you know, the cost to their household and how this fee will impact them over time as well as we always bring into the needs of our infrastructure. All right, and then moving on to the expenditures for the water fund. We, the top chart, it will divide it up by subcategory for you. And the total increase on the, the expenditure side is also 4.5%. And the largest increase comes from the services category, which is your group health insurance and also some of our sustainability pieces that go into that. That would actually be in other, correct, transfers. So personnel has a total increase of 7.6%. That does assume an average merit increase of 3% to all those eligible employees. Of course, the group insurance and the travel and training. We've tried to shave off some of those, but you know, as Julie said, we're in the personnel business. So we need to keep education going. Supplies has a slight increase of close to 1%. And then chemicals are the largest cost here in the water fund. So that's, that changes with the petroleum-based industry, just depends on where it's at. But as she says, inflation is leveling and things are kind of balancing out for us. So the increase is not so much for fiscal year 26. Maintenance has a slight decrease. We have replaced a lot of aging infrastructure and so the need is not there as much. But we do have the GAC filters in the water production plant that, that, that was implemented a couple of years ago on the operational side rather than on the asset replacement side. So that cost has leveled out for us now. And capital. So with those transfers out, CIP last year, we were able to transfer 425,000 to the capital improvement fund. This year, we were able to bump it up to 500,000. And then we added in that facility fund of 125,000. And then asset replacement, actually, we did a little bit of cut on that. That was a $100,000 decrease. But for the most part, everything is pretty level. It's not drastic increase overall and it's right where we need to be. Okay, and that's all we have on water fund. Be happy to ask any questions.
Any questions, Trina? Mr. Harris needs a leave. We'll see you another time.
We have two citizen speakers.
All right, any questions between us?
On water fund?
No? All right, first citizen speaker.
John Harrison.
I'm sorry, do we have something else?
Yes.
Presentation is still going, that was just the water fund, we were wrapping up. That's okay.
We got confused there for a second.
Sorry. Okay, so moving on to debt service. And this is going to be water and sewer, I'm sorry, general fund and water debt service. And my slides are all out of whack. So as of right now, starting fiscal year 26, our outstanding principal debt would be $122 million. And that is if we were to pay everything off today. The water and sewer fund would pay $43 million of that. Your property tax would pay $54 million of that and EIC would be responsible for approximately $25 million of that. We always like to bring this into, to perspective just to see where the monies come from and who is responsible for what, just for a clearer picture to the public. So starting with debt fund service, I'm sorry, the water fund debt service. Fiscal year 26 debt payments would be approximately 4.76 million. And that is 26.9% of the water fund revenues. Our financial management policy requires us to be at a 35% limit of our revenue. So we're well below that. We are currently looking at future debt capacity to see when and if the need arises for us to issue further debt. We do have some debt dropping off in 2029, be the last payment. So 2030 looks like we'll have some stuff coming open. And we just gave you the issuance of the previous debt purposes, they're in the white box. Obviously, our last one was the 2023 water revenue bonds. On the general fund debt service, $5.3 million for fiscal year 26 payments. 4.2 is going to be paid by property tax and EIC transfers over approximately $1.1 million to take care of their portion of the bills. With this debt service, our INS tax rate is going to remain at 14.06 and that is only 25% of the overall tax rate. Again, our charter require, requires us to fulfill only 25%. We can't go beyond that. So any new debt we take out or issue would complicate that, that scenario there for us. And we just have this bar graph here at the bottom just to show the capacity and when you'll see some opening of that gap. And then one more, I believe Julie talked to you about it at budget workshop. So we are anticipating to issue 2025 tax notes to help fund our asset replacement fund because we were short in transferring over asset replacement dollars out of the general fund this year. With all that's going on, all the unknowns, we did not want to stifle our progress in contributing to sustainability efforts. So we've been speaking with financial advisors. We think we can afford $700,000 approximately in tax notes that will not impact the debt rate at all whatsoever. And that is currently in the works. So probably by the end of the fiscal year, we should be trying to wrap that up if you so approve. That will cover police vehicles and equipment that were needed to go into the replacement plan this year for fiscal year 26. And we hope that goes through. And that is all I have. Julie will speak over capital improvement fund and then shop for presentation.
Okay, so just a quick overview. I know we talked about this or Kyle did in some detail at the budget workshop. It's going to jump ahead like three. Maybe, try it this way. Okay, so this is just a list of previously funded and in progress capital projects. So obviously, the $20 million that issued by EIC is related to these first ones. It's Quality Alive, so Olympic Pool, Callow Theater, which is scheduled to be completed by the end of the month. And then the golf course, which you know, they're heavily anticipating the reopening of that at the end of the month. So we're excited to see the Heart of the Hills Golf Tournament be the first participants on the new course. KSP and Guadalupe Park Playgrounds, those were completed unfortunately. A lot of damage there that we're still assessing. And we've had some, already some vendors out and FEMA's been out and looked at those. So those will be repaired or rebuilt as needed. Heart of the Hills Heritage Center going to be nearing completion as well, so you're familiar with that. A lot of funding mechanisms went into that, so not all debt service, but because a piece of it was, we went ahead and included it here. And then Grand, Grand McDonald Park, of course, is kind of in a holding pattern right now just due to the flood. Public Safety Facility, we're scheduled for substantial completion tomorrow. I'll let Michael answer any questions you have on that. I know there's still some outstanding things that need to be completed. That doesn't mean we're going to be moving in tomorrow. That just means we'll be able to start doing work that we need to, to transition in. Al Mooney Road is in the works, so scheduled to be completed in the spring. And then we have already contributed our portion of the airport land acquisition. And so that is still in the works and we'll be bringing that back to you with more information. We anticipate a reimbursement grant from Techstock for that property. Then we have the hazard mitigation citywide. Y'all have been hearing about this since winter storm Yuri. We finally have received award letters on that and it looks like that project is going to be moving forward. So then we have ARPA funds that were allocated for Singing Wind Disc Golf Course. So Drew and his team are working on getting that kicked off. We're hoping that that'll be finished by the end of the year. And that'll be nice for those communities over there that are growing to give them some extra activities. And then some paving on the hillside of Curville Shrauner Park. So the only new thing that we really have proposed this year for capital projects is replacement of our citywide phone system. So that's not actually just the phones, it's the whole infrastructure related to that. It's really old and Charlie's been asking us to do this for probably three or four years. And so we, we really need to do it. And this is the time to do it since we're transitioning into the new facility. And then any flood-related improvements, we're still focusing on mitigation, rebuilding, repair. And so we're deep in that. And so we'll be bringing you back regular flood updates as we have more information. Water capital projects, so these are already funded projects. They're either in process or getting ready to wrap up. So Nap Forest Main, Lower Street, Storage Tank and Pump, and then some lift station improvements. Travis Street, which is getting ready, I believe. We're already in plan review, I believe we talked about last week. Clarifier is in active construction and then some manhole replacements that we're doing. So we're proposing for the upcoming budget raw water supply design and TCEQ certification there permitting and then plan and design of a potential new well. And Dalton or David, either one can speak to those. Development Services, just real quick, not a big change here. The only increase really here, of course, personnel that all the other funds are seeing. But this is where the one new animal control and code enforcement person is proposed. Hotel occupancy tax, we've really been tracking this close. And what we've been seeing is either consistent over the last several years, barely making budget. And then 24, 25 is going to miss and we know that. 26, we're estimating about a 12% drop in revenues. And so we've taken some action to make sure that that fund stays in balance by having, we've had to make some adjustments. And so we realized that's maybe not going to be super popular. So I wanted to make sure we went ahead and talked about this. So CVB voluntarily took a 10% cut. We can't pay out revenues, we do not have. So they took a cut. Community Arts Program is under contract and so that is partially grant funded with the community foundation. So that is the city's portion and you see that growing there because the community foundation had a bigger portion up front. And then we have a bigger portion on the backside. This is year three and the final year of that contract. And they are looking at other funding sources. So I believe that they're really trying to continue that effort. Arcadia Live, Playhouse 2000, Fourth on the River, depending on how things go, Triathlon and Museum of Western Art. So these are all organizations that we typically fund a portion of through HOT. So of course, these agreements are all intended to put heads in beds. That is their primary driver for us making contributions to those organizations. And then we're just going to see what available resources are as we go into each one of those contracts and we'll bring that back to you as we get closer. Yes, please.
Since the Arcadia Playhouse, the Callow Theater rather, has been closed for six months or more. I understand the cut, but I would encourage everyone to just please support all of these, but them in person, particularly because that theater is what brought people to town. VK Garage is great, a lot of locals attend that. But I think the theater itself was a draw from around the area. So I would just say let's, let's get some tickets and go to some shows and get your friends to come and, I mean, that's the least we can do.
Of course, and the more people that come here to see those kind of attractions, then the, the higher our occupancy tax revenue is and the more we can contribute because that is restricted funds and so we can only use that to drive tourism. So, very good point. General asset replacement, Trina talked a little bit about this and I won't read all of the detail, but the list here of what we're kind of anticipating purchasing. And you can see the blue is the transfer in from the general fund. And that will be, of course, you know, a push point if we have to use it, if we get, you know, into a situation to where property tax is not coming back the way it needs to be. The green is those anticipated tax notes because we wanted to show that would transfer in, the expense would actually land here. So if those were issued, then, then the revenue and expense would land in this fund. Water, same thing, water asset replacement, pretty healthy. We were actually able to reduce the transfer to that this year. We've done a pretty good job over the last several years of identifying needs and, and taking care of some replacements. And so we feel very comfortable with that reduction and what we're able to do. This actually even allows us to add a hydro excavator that's been requested for a couple of years. And so we're able to do that even by reducing the funding a little bit. So very happy with the progress made there and we're hoping that we can continue that pattern with the general fund over the next few years and just reduce the age of the assets will reduce our liability in total. So last thing, enterprise funds. And I wanted to hit on this so that you understand fully the impact and, and the implications, I guess, of removing KSP and golf from the general fund. So really, if they're a fully fee-based organization, entity, department, the idea is that they would operate like a business. So they would be self-sustainable within a reasonable period of time. And we've been working really hard with parks and with golf on creating five-year business models to get them to where they can completely stand on their own two feet with the revenues that they generate. That relieves some pressure off of property tax, for one thing, because we're not supplementing that like it was when it was in the general fund and not really taking a look at what the revenues compared to expenditures were. So really a business decision. So we also took into account So we also took into account what future capital needs were, and trying to build out some sustainability long-term. So this'll be year one. It's gonna be a test year, really, for golf. KSP, you know, we've got to really consider what's going on right now and the implications to the rental and the use of the river. So it's gonna be, we had this built out, obviously, before that happened. So we don't expect KSP to be in the black in year one, because we expect to take a pretty big dip in revenues over there. So we did contract with a golf professional. They reviewed operations, worked with us on some long-term planning. Golf course is balanced, and they have some larger purchases in there that we're pretty much just holding on those until we kind of see if the revenue is gonna make. And so we have some things designed within the budget to help us get there in the event that revenues don't come back like we project. Although, I think it's pretty exciting, opening that new course. And if you haven't seen it, it's beautiful. So I'm very excited for the community to have something that nice. And I think it's gonna require this and require some expenses if we're gonna keep that $4 million investment. Same thing with Curville Shonner Park, we talked about that, and we're still kind of in assessment mode. And so more to come as we look into FEMA and what those repair and replacements are gonna be. Just wanted to give you this look, it is in the budget book, but this is the citywide budget. So you can tell we have 29 funds. Every fund has a different accounting rule, and some of these funds are restricted for specific uses. So we keep them separate so that we make sure that we're accounting for them properly. General Fund and Water Fund are both in balance, as you can see at the top. Those are our two largest funds outside of capital projects. But due to the nature, rules and restrictions, not all funds are required to be balanced, because we may receive revenues in one year that are expended in the next, or we may actually generate fund balance over time that is used for some long-term planning purposes. So that is your citywide. And I will entertain any questions on any of these sections we've talked about, or open the floor back to Dalton if you want to make any wrap-up comments.
Brenda?
I just have a question about D-Vat. And if there's anything in the works now that might move us towards generating some kind of revenue from that facility?
So, yes, we are currently going out for an RFP, so the Request for Proposal, with a future date. And the future date will be after the current term expires. We kind of talked through those, and we'll pretty much be ready to go. So we'll have whoever is selected in the RFP process, we'll get them in front of council as soon as we know who they are, and then they'll be ready to kick off January 1.
Okay.
That'll also help with our HOT tax.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Any other questions for either Julie or Dalton? All right, thank you. I believe we have people signed up to speak.
John Harrison?
Mr. Harrison.
John Harrison, 2911 Dry Hollow. I have to bring my props, because I can't remember all of this stuff.
You can use that if you want to use.
That'll help?
No, this is fine.
Okay.
I'm not gonna be here long. Got two comments, two questions. Comments, the transparency of your budgets is incredible. I really appreciate the visibility of the budgets, that I can go online and ask a lot of questions, and I can get ahold of Julie most of the time to get my questions answered. So I appreciate what the city is doing, has done for many, many years. It does it very, very well. Question one, in the proposed budget that was published a couple of weeks ago in the executive summary, it talks about the fund balances. It says the general fund holds 12.9 million, well above the $5 million minimum. I thought we had by ordinance a requirement to hold reserves at 25%. So this $5 million is a long ways from 25%. So I don't know. I'm just, that's a question, I know, I think the reserves are much more than $5 million.
It is. If you, because of your four minutes, if you want to finish, I'll answer them all at once, so I don't restrict you.
Question two, the tax note is for $700,000, and our annual payment is 233, and we're only gonna be a three-year note. Is that right? So it's no interest?
The payments will be spread and staggered, so that's an estimated payment. Until we issue, we won't really know.
Okay.
It's within that range, we had to keep it.
But 233 is about a penny on our tax rate, correct?
Okay.
That was a question. Another comment. Oh, I am not in favor of deferring movement of funds into the general fund asset replacement. I think you're just delaying it for another city council. You need to do your job, and you need to fund these general asset replacements. We have had a hard time doing that for the 15 years that I've been in Curville. And to me, you're just kicking the can down the road again. Thank you very much.
Julie?
So to answer your first question, so we do have 12.9 million, and that's just in general operating fund. Policy is between 15 and 25%. So I took it to the minimum just to show what we had over. The main reason we did that exercise is to know how much cash we had, if we had to dip into that for flood repairs, that we would have to get back. So financial management policy says we have to maintain between 15 and 25%. I'm not sure why it's the between, but that's the way our financial management policy is written. So we have the reserve of, we have a target of 25%. So in our forecast, you will always see 25%. But I went ahead and did that calculation, because as we were having cash flow conversations about flood mitigation, that's what that is. On the tax note, that's an average of all three years. Trina just pulled it up. So yeah, with 4.75% interest is what we have calculated on the high side. So we're hopeful that that would come in less than that. But that would be the max of our payment each year. And those would be structured depending on what the rate came back at. Does that answer that?
Thank you.
Okay.
Next?
George Burdi.
Rudy?
George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. And I think as far as his question about the 25%, I think what he's referring to may be correct. The policy is 15 to 25. State says 15. We had had something about 25, whatever. But in like 2010 or something, there was some self-imposed resolution by council to not just target it, but they were gonna hold themselves to the 25% you might look for it, I'm just saying.
It's in the management policy.
Yeah. So my comments were gonna be kind of referring to what Mr. McKinney talked about last meeting, I guess. He talked about, you know, we're gonna die if we don't have more growth, tax base. Our budget would be broke, is kind of what he was alluding to. And what I'd like to point out is that that kind of highlights the biggest problem we have, which is our current revenues don't support our current expenses as they are. And if we need more revenue coming in to pay for prior expenses, you're really just describing, and I know it's hyperbole, and I don't really mean it to be, but you're describing a Ponzi. And they, another comment you had made was, you know, the growth would be, that would be helpful in that it wouldn't have as much cost as the regular, as the rest of the growth that we have. But because of, you didn't use the term, but it sounded like economy of scale.
Okay.
As she pointed out, and I think the city manager pointed out, we're at capacity with the resources we have right now, personnel-wise and otherwise. So any new costs coming in is going to force you to expand the stuff. There is no economy, there's no room for economy of scale in our current budget. So any new growth, if you don't ask the question, what's the transaction cost? Essentially, I think the state legislature, every action they take, they have a financial statement at the bottom, basically saying the impact, the net impact. If you guys would start doing that, every time you have a agreement coming through, ask the question, what's the net impact to our budget if we do this? Then you'll get to the fact that a lot of these are actually coming in at a loss, which we can't afford, because we already have a loss. I mean, we're already chasing our tails. So I say all that to say, as they pointed out, we're tight, we're making cuts, we're making deferments, we're making all the different things that we're doing. And yet, at the same time, we're bringing on, we're looking at, you guys are continuing to look at, which should be in this budget, but looking at that whiskey cany development, any development that gives away cost of service, which we don't have, we currently aren't paying for it right now, is bringing on more loss. It's not net growth, it's actually net loss. And if you just would ask the question, don't trust me, ask them to present that information when you take on the actions. The other stuff is having to do, well, I was gonna talk about water, but I'm gonna have to look at the budget, because she talked about some stuff that was actually, I was glad to see, so I'll let that go for right now. Street maintenance, they kind of talked about it. I've talked about it over and over again, I kind of preach about it. But the question is, when do, when are expenses to be captured? And I think Julie referenced it, it's when they're accrued, not when we pay them, not when they're invoiced. And so the question is, why do we continue to budget street maintenance expense as if it's the expense accrued, when it's really the amount we're gonna pay? So we actually know, like I said, you can look at your last, I think it was the last study, who would probably tell you, in 2023, maybe? Where we paid somebody to tell us, how much would it cost to? And it was, give or take, $5 million, slightly under $5 million. That's the expense that should be reported in there, because that's what's accrued.
The timer did go off.
Okay, I'm sorry, well, that's my question, so.
Thank you. Any other public speakers?
Yes, sir.
What we have done is completed Item 2A, which is a presentation of the budget. The next item is a resolution to set our ad valum property tax rate. You want to start with that one, Ms. Barrett?
Sure. So I didn't do a presentation for this one, I didn't feel it was necessary. Basically, this resolution is just for you guys to consider the proposed rate and setting a public hearing for that rate. So not making any decisions on the tax rate today, but just setting a public hearing, which is scheduled for September 9th for a public hearing in first reading, and September 23rd for the second and final reading, if it's as proposed.
Any questions then on this resolution? All right, is there, are other people signed up to speak?
Yes.
Go ahead, please, I'm sorry.
John Harrison?
Mr. Harrison.
John Harrison, 2911 Dry Hollow. This is tough, this is a tough one for you guys, and I understand it. I don't like the tax note for the police cars. I think we need to go buy the, we need to pay the general fund, or we need to go figure out how to get the money. I propose that you all think about adding a penny to what you've already proposed, which will fund basically that car payment, a $250,000 car payment for those cars. I trust the chief, we need him. So I want to support that. But I think you ought to step up to the bar and say, add a penny to the ad valum tax rate, and let's get the chief his cars. Thank you very much.
Jacqueline Murky, but I don't see her.
I think she's gone.
And George Burdi? That's the end of the citizen speakers.
Right, thank you. We have a resolution before, so we've had public comment. That's the will of the council.
That's comments from us.
Go ahead, please.
Well, it's been pretty obvious, we're short of money. And we're kind of on a sinking ship here, as Dalton described it that way, and I would describe it that way. We got our hands tied on the general fund. Water fund pretty much is fine. Most of the other works pretty good, but we got our hands tied on how much money we can spend, if we can raise property taxes. And it's less than the amount of inflation, and it's a whole nother matter, but we, Mr. Rudy's correct, we're spending more than we got. We can't, not putting back money for asset replacement, or for CIP, or for anything else. Then, so we're fighting all that before the 4th of July. And then, this year's consequences of the flood that we know about, not everything we know about, but we, we have at least $400,000 worth of overtime, that's not in the issued budget. And in one month, we were $600,000 short on EMS fees that we would normally have. So we're $1 million in the hole, and we haven't begun to understand what else that we've got. And that's before, I mean, we were in a hole before the flood. And I think, I mean, nobody likes to say we need more taxes, but you know, we've already a million in the hole. And if we go to the 8%, we're just getting $400,000, it's not even getting half of what we're at, and we're gonna be out more next year. I mean, this isn't all of it yet, we don't know how much. So we've got, I mean, for one thing, I think, you know, the long-term budget, we have the five-year budget, we're not gonna maintain our required fund balance. We can't keep it at 25%. It's no wonder. I mean, and I don't, I think inflation's gonna get worse. Now, I am a little more optimistic that the growth is gonna translate into some savings. George may be right, we haven't really actually done the numbers, but I don't think we have to add police and fire and safety for RADA, you know, I think there is some. But that, beside the point, we really are in big trouble, and we got no, under current things, we're just gonna get worse and worse. Now, Dalton's making some good suggestions about some things that we can do, but some of that, that's gonna have to go to the voters. And so, but in the meantime, I think we need that 8% cap. It's not, it's $10, $15 a month, or kind of an average, it's not a lot. And the people that were, took losses on the real estate, they won't be paying that if we do that this year. They won't, they're gonna have reduced property taxes. So the people that didn't have losses are gonna be the ones paying a little bit more, but it's not a lot. Anyway, I think we gotta think real hard, and I certainly would propose that we do the full 8%. But in addition to that, I think we need to get an agenda item, and we've got a, we need, really need to put a citizen group together to help us decide, what do we want to do? And, you know, what kinds of options? We can come, a list of things we can do, and we can, we can scrimp and save, and we can do golf and park on their own funds, and get them out of the general fund. We can do all these little things, but it's not enough to get us down the road. And so we really, if we're gonna put something on the ballot, we gotta get started, we gotta get, we need to get some consensus from our citizens, and have some meetings, do something similar to what the school district did when they passed the bond issue, and they had met in all the different school buildings, and maybe we need to meet at some different city facilities, and we need to talk about what's going on, and, you know, because it's gonna come down to some pretty tough service cuts, police and fire and EMS, and payroll cuts, and it's gonna be, you know, we put this off, we're gonna be really buried. I mean, we are kicking the can down the road, and we may have to do that today. We can't do more than that today. We're gonna have to kick the can down the road some. But I think, and whether we have set aside a fund for disasters, well, we don't have near enough money, cover the disaster money we're already out. So I don't know, like, I mean, it'd be fine if we, thought we were gonna have more than enough, but we're not gonna have more than enough, we're gonna have near enough. And so we got a great city, we got a lot of great amenities, we got great fire and police protection, and we got, all these things, and the streets are, have been in good shape, and they're not gonna stay that. These things aren't gonna stay that way unless we come up with something. We can, there's options, but we need to vet those options, and we need to spend a lot of time in the next few months to get organized for this. So whatever we do tonight, I suppose that $400,000 is gonna make or break us, but man, we need it. And every little bit helps. And if we don't have a good reason to ask for that, I don't know what more, how better reason we could have. I don't know what more we, how better reason we, we could have to say, man, we've had these losses. We've had more than that in losses. And it affects the whole city. So it affects all the citizens, all the, all the property owners. It does. It affects, it affects the quality of life in our community, and we, we, we want to do the best we can to keep the quality of life the way it is.
Other comments? Brenda?
Well, I agree with what you're saying, and I thought about that last time we voted on this tax rate, that we were pushing the can down the, the street. And honestly, now, if not, is the most critical time for us to be thinking about how we're going to support what we want our city to be, you know, good streets and proper protection for our citizens and all of these things. So I, I wasn't prepared to think about 8%, but I was prepared to think about something more than rate that we have, just the three and a half. I think we have to start somewhere. I mean, this is going to really be a booger for the next council or the next one that really has to start looking at some cuts and stops of services and things like that. That, that I hope we never see, but it's kind of like your own personal income. I mean, if you have things that are affecting your own personal finances, maybe, you know, there's things you have to cut or before you start conserving. And so I, I just think it's, it's a
Kind of a personal decision.
We're here. We're the voice of, of these folks. And I would hate for someone in a couple of years from now to say, gosh, what the heck were they thinking? Well, we can't get, this street's not prepared, not projected to be fixed until 2030. So, I mean, drainage issues, and there's so many issues that have a, have a price tag on them. And I don't really want to see some of those things go away. So I, when you look at it like the difference in someone's annual monthly expense, I think, I think they could manage that. If we're talking about $70 for an average family. If it was, you know, a lot more than that, I would be against it, but, so I'm, I'm kind of torn because I want to, I want to think about what this, how this impacts families, but I also want to think about what it's going to impact them if we can't provide some of these services down the road. My two cents.
How long do we have to make this decision, Dalton, or go back on? Is it three years? Is that what understood at one point?
So a couple, couple points of clarification as, as y'all are kind of talking about this. Whatever rates y'all discuss tonight, you can always go below that, but you cannot go above it. So if y'all adopted the proposed rate at 8%, y'all could go down to the 3.5% upon adoption. If y'all do the 3.5% tonight, y'all cannot go above the 3.5% at a future date. The disaster tax rate, from the way we, we understand, and Mike, please correct me if I'm wrong, the, the disaster tax rate calculation would be done for three years. And then it would revert back to the original tax rate. So it doesn't create a no, a new, no new revenue rate at a higher rate. It doesn't, we're not, it, it doesn't allow the city to step up for three years at 8% each year. It'll just allow you to collect those revenues at that higher 8%, but then it'll, it'll revert back to the original 3.5%.
Right. Ms. Barron may know this, because we've talked about this. I think it's an individual assessment each year. It's up to three years. But we could make it next year, we can go back down.
Correct. Y'all could go back down. But it, but it, the 8%, I think the important part of it is, the 8% would not create a, a new, a new no new revenue rate level. It would have to revert back to the original no new, voter approval rate or no new revenue rate.
I have a couple of other questions. So disaster relief replacement funds for overtime and things like that would come from FEMA eventually?
Well, there's a lot of unknowns. So when it comes to individual assistance, public assistance, HMGP is not even an option right now, and we're trying to still see if that's an option, which is Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. We have so many unknowns that we don't even want to begin to speculate.
So if we had this 8%, this difference, this extra disaster relief funds can only be spent on disaster recovery, but does that include overtime and things like that?
Well, so that really is kind of up to council. So the way that there's no specific rule or statute on how you spend the money, it just gives you the opportunity to, to levy that additional tax to offset whatever you want. We were basically just saying, as a recommendation, if city council chose to restrict it into disaster-related expenses, we can tie those to any disaster-related expenses that would be over it. But what it would do is what we wanted to make sure that the residents understood and that council understood, we were not going to tie in new positions or new, like recurring costs into something that was going to go away. That was the most important, important feature.
That's a good point.
And if for some reason, you know, as, as we start getting these, you know, this, the numbers out there, let's say that we're able to cut, you know, cover down on some of the costs, but we're able to offset, you know, part of it through fund balance and part of it through the disaster relief fund, we can keep that fund there and use that for future disasters or future issues, you know, should something arise, you know, later on down the road, or when something does.
If we don't do the 8%, or the, the first year, yes. Well, first of all, again, would not impact the people that had damage.
Correct.
Secondly, then, if you don't do it all, the first year, you still can do the second?
I, we'll have to get back to you on that one. We know that it can be calculated for each year, you know, for up to three years. And so I think we'll have to get back with y'all on that, but we think that y'all still would be able to calculate it each year for up to three years and use it or not use it. But we'll have to confirm that one.
That's correct. I talked to Bob about that. That is correct.
So if we don't use it this year, technically, y'all could use it next year.
We have three years, or to the point that our value restores to the value prior to the flood.
Gotcha.
So whatever loss value is, when we get back to what was our base before the flood, then we would have to stop. So if we had a bunch of new value next year and we were back to that, then that's off the table as an option. But it's three years or whichever comes first.
More, more discussion, please. More questions.
Inasmuch as we have time to think about it between now and the next.
But we have to make a decision to go to 8% tonight.
I would say, I would make a motion that we go to the 8% tonight. It gives us some time to think about, maybe it's four, five, or six, or whatever. But it doesn't lock us, maybe we don't do anything, but I think we just maybe ought to give that a little more thought. And so let's think about the 8% in the meantime.
And to clarify, the 8% means an 8% increase in the tax rate.
Correct. In the M and O only. Only on the M and O side. And if, if, up to you, but we could provide the multiple scenarios for you.
There's several quick points that I'd like to make. First off, that law exists for communities that have had a disaster. And by every measure, by every rational measure, our community has undergone a disaster. Secondly, I agree with Mr. Harrison. I don't particularly favor a tax note for KPD vehicles. I know it's been proposed, and I appreciate the proposal, but I don't, I don't feel like that's the way to go. And I am not in favor of delaying general asset replacement. Because every day we do it. Every day we don't get enough altitude to clear the trees, those trees get closer and closer. And I'm concerned that if we don't stick to a plan, a prudent fiscal plan for general asset replacement, our community will be in trouble. Ms. Seagman, you said something funny. You said, if we make the decision tonight, in two years, people will say, what were they thinking? And I guarantee you, no matter what we decide tonight, in two years, people will say, what were they thinking? In fact, if we adopt the 8% increase in the, in M and O tonight, tomorrow, people will be saying, probably even tonight, people will be saying, what were we thinking? The thing I think that we need to be, what was I thinking? What we need to be clear, if you, your property has suffered damage and you file the paperwork for reduced value, you're not going to be paying more. The rate will be more, but the value will be less. Secondly, you know, during our discussion tonight, we were told that we had an increase in value of $71.2 million in property values. Meanwhile, KCAT estimates the city is going to suffer $65 million in reduced value. And the $65 million in reduced value is going to reduce income, uh, property tax to the city at $275,000. The increase in value would increase property tax revenue to the city by $297, a difference of $22,000. But there is no increase. I appreciate the duress under which this budget was prepared. Dalton, I was with you many of those days at the EOC when we were not thinking about budget.
I still was.
Our focus was trying to rescue those in peril and find those who are missing. Our focus at the EOC remains to find those who are missing. And so, look, I would like this council to be prudent and think ahead. If we adopt a tax rate tonight that we can't go above later, then we've, we've painted ourselves into a corner. If we adopt a tax rate that's higher, that we can come down from, that seems more prudent to me. I, I, I can already hear the names that will be called tomorrow if we adopt a much higher tax rate. All I can say is, I was elected to do what I think is best for our community. Not what I think will, will make me the apple of our community's, you know, not, not that will make me a popular person, for I am not a popular person. I think we need to adopt a rate that gives us some flexibility over the next few weeks to finalize what we think is not only best for our community, but what makes sense for those of us who plan to live here the rest of our lives. So, that being said, I would certainly entertain a motion. Unless you want to discuss this more, I'm happy to discuss it for as long as you like.
Mayor, I'm just going to provide this up here. It's got the language on the bottom that if y'all decide to do a different one, the language at the bottom in Mike's handwriting is what we need to be admitted on that motion.
The, the sad fact is, none of us can read Mike's handwriting.
Sorry. It wasn't intended for you. I'm happy to read it.
Well, he's one of many.
Look, I pay property taxes. I do. And I'm, believe it or not, the second youngest person here on the city council, and I, my taxes are not frozen. And my family owns property. This will affect us directly. Property taxes are a way for each of us to pay our fair share. Some of our neighbors have been hurt and hit with worse than property damage. They've lost family. And if each of us can contribute some during this fiscal tragedy, I think it's worth, worth looking at, in my opinion. If there's anyone who wants to make further comments, that's fine, or if you would like to make a motion, I'd be happy to entertain it.
I just want to, and I apologize I had to step out, but just to clarify, since I wasn't here, if we go to the 8% tonight, we are not locking it in at 8% tonight. That is also not 8% of your house bill.
On the tax rate.
Because somebody said, oh my God, my taxes are going to go up to $32,000 a year. No, it is not. I agree with what's been said. When I came back in, we need to look at doing something. But also, I think about, like the mayor just said too, because we're not frozen. We're not, we all pay taxes. Our taxes aren't frozen. I've got to, you know, we've got to think about those who were not affected and what they're going to end up paying. But I also realize that this is only for three years, correct? So then, knock down to what it was.
Correct. It does not change to a, a new or a higher no new revenue rate. This is not a loophole into increasing the no new revenue rate. Once the disaster voter approval rate is done, it goes back to whatever.
Last year was maybe?
Yeah, we have to get the details on it, but it does not create a new.
So would it go back to the 5595, or would it go to the proposed 557?
5579.
5579.
05711 would be the new.
It's the M and O only. So remember that. We're only, we only deal with the M and O on the 8%. So the 8% in this case would be 5711 per the tax rate calculation for this year. Now, as far as going back in future years, there's, there's some nuances to that, and I can provide it for you. But we have three years to calculate at this. Doesn't mean we have to use it or a portion of it, but we have three years or when the city's property tax value comes back to what it was pre-disaster.
I think we definitely need to look at it, but I also think we need to let the public know, or citizens of Curville know, exactly how much, if we went to 8%, what it's going to give us for infrastructure and rebuild. Or if we went to 3.5%.
$471,000 would be the additional revenue generated off the 8% for this year.
$471,000.
$471,000 additional. So the $401,000 is based off of the 300, 3.5% plus the increment, and the additional of $471,000 would be going up to the 8%.
I can provide you with multiple steps to that if you want to. And remember, those are estimated based on the collection rates that we're determining, so.
And I know we'll have time to talk about it before our next meeting when we get to do the first reading, so.
I can bring those back to you on the 26th.
Correct.
And one of the things that I'm concerned about is, and we've got a lot of expenses associated with this flood. I don't know what that number is. I have no idea what that number is.
We don't either.
I'm sorry?
We don't either.
Well, and, you know, we're, we're looking at FEMA grant reimbursement, but we don't know what that number is either. And we don't know what our 25% that we have to come up with. We don't know what that number is. So in light of all those unknowns, I feel like we don't really have any choice. But to do a little bit of both, whether we raise the tax rate a little bit and decrease the services a little bit, it's, it's, you know, I always look at things as wants versus needs. We are clearly in a climate of doing only what we need at the moment. But I think what we need may be a little bit of an increase in the tax rate. So that's where I'm at on this.
And, and Mayor and Council, you know, if I may, we did not come up with this and decide this in a vacuum this year. You know, the disaster was an extremely tragic and unfortunate, you know, event that we're navigating, but it did not drive the decisions within this budget. You know, you know, I've been, I haven't even been here two years yet. We started this process, when I got here, we started this process to, to really dive into the budget to better understand. So we, we already had this stuff on the horizon, but until we really dove into the weeds of it and said, where can we trim? What can we cut? Where are we at? And started doing exercises, we knew this year was going to be the year that we were going to come, come and talk to you about the good, the bad, and the ugly, regardless of the disaster. So what, what I can pretty much say from our account, from my accountability standpoint, is we're going to continue to dive into this. You know, we're going to continue to look down every nook and cranny, figure out every solution, you know, to this. We're, we're not going to stop. You know, this is, this is us just talking about it, I'm going to say, really probably for the first time openly, to be able to talk about these, so we don't have to kick the can down the road anymore. And we understand that this year is kind of that, you know, kick the can down the road a little bit. Again, we made a few changes just in light of the disaster and trying to, you know, navigate this. But we can't kick the can down the road. And, and as we navigate this, what you're going to get from me and, and our team is to make sure that we come up with solutions, that we don't have to do that anymore. And those are going to be some hard solutions.
And who knows what the legislature is going to do with the
Oh, they'll screw it all up.
Take it down to 2.5% versus 3.5%, and so, so it goes. So your choices are going to get narrower in the future, but.
Once again, any further discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve, uh, Resolution Number twenty-two dash twenty-two five, that we, uh, we, uh, adopt and oppose the total, uh, total ad valour property tax rate for twenty, for the twenty-six, is that the, at point five-seven-one-one, which includes an increase of eight percent per the voter, voter approval disaster rate.
I'll second.
All right, get it. If that's not right, y'all need to get up and correct.
So the total, hold on a second.
Thank you, Karahama.
Well, that's just, that's just the, the M and O.
Right, so let me...
The total is.
Yes, so that's, that is the total rate. So I don't know if that resolution differentiates M and O or not. I don't think it does.
No, so that's just the total.
So the eight percent.
That's total.
That is the total. So...
That's just the, that's the maximum rate that they can now adopt.
That is the max. That is the max.
Point five-seven-one-one.
Point five-seven-one-one is the max tax rate that it could be.
That's the, that's the, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Motion second? Mr. Hayes, do we feel that that motion is adequate to meet the needs of this resolution?
I, I do, and we'll change the resolution. The only thing I'll say too is that now that rate will be greater than the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate. And so that, I'll reflect that in a revised resolution that I'll get you to sign later. Yep.
Yeah, no, that's correct. I was just gonna say that there's gonna be some language that has to change in there, and we'll likely identify the M and O rate separately, just for clarification, because that's on the M and O side only. So Mike and I'll work with that, and then I'll provide you some scenarios on the twenty-sixth, so that you can have better information.
Everybody clear?
Correct. So...
Correct. Right.
Right. This is, remember, this is a, a process that the city uses, um, and we really adopt a resolution when we don't have to, but what's important is you all set the rate that now finance will put into the paper as notice, and you can ab, you know, as we've talked about, you can absolutely come down from that rate, but for now, that is the maximum rate that you all will be able to adopt moving forward.
You have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. No, you're good.
Well, that's a tough to swallow.
It is a tough one.
It is a tough one. I hope, uh, people realize what this council did tonight was try to do what was prudent, but what, not what was, hopefully not popular.
I know it's done and over, but can I ask Julie a question on it? When you go, when you publish this in the paper, Julie, what's it gonna say?
It's gonna say, consideration, public hearing consideration of a tax rate of five-seven-one-one. That doesn't mean that that's what you have to adopt. You can do just exactly what you did tonight. There can be discussion. We can look at multiple scenarios, and then you can make a decision. You could go all the way down as far as you wanted to. You just cannot go beyond that.
Thank you.
I, I think for me, and I'm just speaking for me, not the rest of council, but I think for me, I would like to have a workshop before the next council meeting on the night, when we're gonna do that, and invite the public so they can come, and we can go over every number, every tenth of a percent, so they would see where we're at and what we adopt. That's total transparency, and, you know, I don't have a problem paying for it because this is my community and I love it, but everybody needs to see what we're looking at. And that's, that's just my opinion, and I'm one of five, but that's what I would, I would request a workshop to invite the public, and if we need to do it somewhere bigger than here, then...
And we should include some discussion about maybe a citizen group or something, or what, we might go for, for the future, because it's not, this is a long-term problem we have, not just this year.
So those would be items for a future agenda, and we'll try to figure that out tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second, which has passed unanimously. Now we're moving to Item Three B, agreement between the City of Kerrville and the West Texas Healthcare Provider Participation District. It says Ms. Barons again. Is that who?
I could be really quick on this unless y'all have questions, but basically, uh, the city council, along with, you know, Peterson and two other counties entered into the LPPF, or the West Texas, bah, 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 thing. It's a mouthful, so I apologize. And basically in that, Peterson and the other counties had, had asked if the city would basically be the administrators in this. So, um, it's, it's a small hourly requirement per year where we're just basically being, you know, doing the, the agendas and, and doing that. In turn, they offered to put the max cap of the administration fee per state law at a hundred fifty thousand dollars to do the audits and to, you know, basically be the pass-through account holder, so we would set up the bank accounts and do all of that. And that's what's before you this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Rice?
It's nice when you get compensated.
Do we, have any citizen speakers?
No, sir.
Thank you. All right. If there are no questions, is there a motion then?
To authorize the city manager to finalize and execute this agreement. Second.
Questions have been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, so vote. Five, zero. Passes unanimously. There's no need to go an executive session, and so, honor serving with you guys. Y'all are, y'all are some tough hombres, is what y'all are. I adjourn this meeting at six-twenty-six.
Needed to make the motion.